The door is open. So I guess I'm gonna call this meeting to order at six o'clock on December 20th. Be it resolved that the meeting be called to order and that the agenda for the meeting be adopted as circulated? Could I have a mover? Dorothy, Councilor Kleiber moves. Can I have a second or? Councilor Beshetti seconds it. Next is?
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Are there any amendments to it? None? Okay. Be it resolved that council accept the following additions for issues or?
We don't have no additions.
No additions? Okay, thank you, thank you. Okay, so opening remarks, I guess I'd just like to thank Public Works for the efforts that they did this last weekend on clearing the snow. There was a lot of it and they did a very quick job on it, so. They had a lot of, no, they had a big task because they had to move, they had to go around some parked cars. So it was tough for them in some places. So thanks for them. The next item on the agenda is number seven. Seven point one, yes?
Did you want to move to fifteen?
Oh, yes, thank you, yes. Is he in?
Yes.
Okay. So we're gonna go down to number fifteen. Twenty twenty-three emergency plan, the administrative report. It's gonna be a Zoom call?
Mr. Mayor, he's right there.
Yeah, you're, you're quiet, but I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Or did you wanna proceed, sir?
Did you wanna make your presentation, Ken?
Ken?
Oh, I'm, basically, it's, it's my recommendation that the council approves the, or adopts a twenty twenty-three emergency plan. The Emergency Measures Act and Local Authorities Emergency Planning and Preparedness Regulation require the municipality submit an emergency plan annually in a province of Manitoba. This, this plan has to be submitted before the end of the year. And the plan that was presented, in my recommendation, should be adopted by council.
Be it resolved that council?
Ask for any questions?
Okay, thank you. Is there any questions?
Yep.
Yep, Miss Ken?
Hey, Ken, how are you? Thanks for your report. Because I, it's been a while since I've been on council. So is this, what, what major changes or any changes from last year's report versus this year's report?
Well, the, the only real significant changes are obviously the, the new members of council being updated in the report so that the appropriate authorities are notified in the event of an emergency. And that the current council as we have today is updated to be essentially the, the elective body that is going to oversee the municipal emergency plan. I find from that, functionally, it is very similar to last year with just contact changes and some, some minor changes relative to, you know, annual updates. But functionally, it's very much the same as it was in twenty-two.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other questions?
Basically, Ken is just putting our names in.
Yeah, putting your names in, any contact changes or changes in order for us to, you know, facilitate the plan or contact the resources needed when or if it's ever required?
Thank you.
Councilor, uh, Pacquiao?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Ken, just a couple of quick questions. Does the plan deal with things like tornadoes? And secondly, are, and if so, then what, how, how does it do that? And then secondly, does the plan talk about practicing simulations with new council members in terms of, you know, in terms of the command structure for a real emergency?
Yeah, do you know, we, several months ago, with the previous council, we went through a functional exercise which was very comprehensive. And that is something that we will do once again with the current council, something that's mandated that we do to stay, stay in good practice and capable of facilitating the plan when, again, when or if it's ever required. And this is a comprehensive plan dealing with a vast array of emergencies, including natural disasters. You mentioned tornadoes. It includes tornadoes and other events where either evacuation or shelter in place may be required. And it's, it's, the breadth of it is beyond simply one emergency, one natural disaster, but it could include flooding, chemical emergencies and events such as that. But it is, it is, it is very broad in its, in its approach. But the, the efforts of myself as the emergency coordinator is to ensure that this is comprehensive and deals with all the situations that may arise or that, that we can anticipate may arise in municipality.
Great. Thank you very much for your work and efforts for getting the plan here. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
No.
None? Okay. So then, be it resolved that the Council of the Rural Municipality of Westin Paul approved a twenty twenty-three emergency plan as submitted. Could I have a mover, please?
Oh.
Councilor Beshetti moves. Councilor Campbell seconds. Could I have, yeah, all in? Isn't there a question?
Yeah, all in favor?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Passed, carried.
Thank you. Thanks, Ken.
Thank you, Ken.
Thank you very much for having me.
Merry Christmas.
Yeah, Merry Christmas to you all too.
Okay, so now we're down to seven point one.
We'll go back to nine minutes.
Yeah, confirmation minutes? Okay, be it resolved that the minutes of the regular planning meeting of council held on December eighth be approved?
I'll move it, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Hold it, excuse me. Councilor, Pacquiao moves. Can I have a second or, please? Councilor Kleiber seconds it. Any questions? Hearing no questions, I, or any comments, hearing no questions, I call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? None carried. Seven point, move now to seven point two. Committee of the whole meeting of December thirteenth. Be it resolved that the minutes of the committee of the whole meeting of council held on December thirteenth be approved? Could I have a motion to, Council Beshetti calls, motions it to be moved? Can I have a second or?
A second.
Councilor Campbell seconds it. Any comments? Hearing no comments. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. All opposed? None carried. Moving down to accounts, ten point one. Payment registers. This is, any comments on this or questions?
I think there's some questions.
Councilor Kleiber?
Yeah. I, I just had a question through the mayor to the C E O about the water line break main repair hydrant cost. That's a separate thing that's happening in Rivercrest, is that correct? That water line break was in Rivercrest?
It's in Rivercrest, yeah.
Yeah. And just for my information, is that, I, I know previously council was informed that we might have to do some replacing there. Is that something that we need to talk about in budget? Is replacing any lines there?
Well, it's, it's, three years ago was a two million dollar job.
Yeah.
So it could be two point five to three million dollars now to replace the lines there. The lines are from nineteen, when Rivercrest in the forties, so the lines are extremely old.
So at one point or another, we're gonna have to do something? Or we wait till they break and then we do something?
Well, we, we do repairs every year.
Yeah.
We spend, you know, anywhere from ten thousand to forty thousand in different years, so, yeah, it's, it's a, a major, a major job for approximately sixty homes that are on the water line there.
Okay. And the boot camp, the boot camp cost for Burgeby Cup, that's a shared cost with different municipalities, is it not?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I just wanted to clarify that in case anybody had some questions up there. And then on the St. Andrew's Septic Service, there was a fire hall and it says River Edge Three and then it says P W One. What's the River Edge Three? What's that?
There is a sewer plant in River's Edge?
So just cleaning that up. Okay, good, thank you very much.
Okay, any other questions? None? Okay, so now we move down, now we move to the manual payment as of December fifteenth. Any questions?
There's only one.
Yes.
Just the H E lab.
Now we move, no questions, so then we move down to number eleven, monthly payroll statement. Could I have, any questions, comments? Be it resolved that payroll of the month of November be as followed, approved as presented. Could I have a mover, please?
I'll move it, Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Pacquiao moves it. Could I have a second or? Councilor Beshetti seconds it. All those, any comments? Hearing none, call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None carried. So the next is emergency plan?
Fifteen point two.
Yep, fifteen point two, spending authority. Be it resolved that the Council of Rural Municipality of Westin Paul, in accordance with section one thirty-three of the Municipal, Municipal Act, adopt as an interim operating budget to be effective only until such time as council adopts the operating budget for the twenty twenty-three fiscal year. Now therefore be it resolved that the following operating items be approved. And there's a list of it in front of you. I'm gonna call for, I'm gonna ask for a mover. Councilor Beshetti moves.
A second.
Councilor Campbell seconds. Any comments somewhere?
Maybe just a quick question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
Through to the C E O. These amounts here for each of the categories, that's just pretty much in line with what we've been doing in the past?
Yeah. This is fairly normal in, in all municipalities and this is what we do, we've done this every year since I've been here in two thousand, since two thousand, two thousand and ten. And it allows us to continue as a business entity into the new year until our budget is set.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Hearing none, I call for, I call for the, a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Carried? We go down. Okay, fifteen point three. A district visit request. Be it resolved that all members of council be authorized to attend the A M M district visit in Westin Paul on February fifteenth at four P M. Can I ask for a mover, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Pacquiao moves. Can I have a second or? Councilor Kleiber seconds it. Any comments, questions?
Um, okay, just a quick question. That doesn't collide with river for planning, does it? Because we meet the third Wednesday of every month.
Okay, what is that?
Um, river for planning, the fifteenth is usually when we would meet.
Okay.
So, and this is at four o'clock and we would be meeting at five. Let me just check and see if they brought that up.
Good. Is this?
My internet doesn't seem to work.
Is this date, is that my start?
You know, we, we, we have to let them know before January twenty-seventh if this date is accepted or not.
Oh, okay.
So we can ask for another date.
Okay.
I, I can't get on the internet for some reason. Can you just come here for a second, Michelle?
Yep, fifteenth, February fifteenth is, is a meeting of the, might have to ask for another date. Is there another date that's suitable for everybody?
Well, the date will have to be, Mr. Mayor.
It's either that date or the next date.
Okay.
Yeah, the date will have to be up to them because they schedule a whole set of.
Oh, they do?
Of meetings, so they, they cross the province, but they have February fifteenth and sixteenth for the interlake.
Okay.
And we can request February sixteenth.
Okay.
And see what they say.
Okay. Is everyone all right with February sixteenth?
Uh, yeah, we should be because our meeting's on the night on the twenty-third, I think, right?
Yep, February sixteenth, yes, it is open for me. Okay, February sixteenth.
Mr. Mayor, will table this to the next meeting per resolution?
Oh, yes, we wanna confirm first. Okay, yes, yep, we'll table it then.
Move to table?
Can we move to table? Can I have a? Councilor Pacquiao, can I have a second or? Councilor Campbell seconds it.
All those in favor?
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
I'll remind you.
So now we're down to question fifteen, oh wait here, fifteen four. Request municipal officer attend a future meeting of council. Be it resolved that Council of Rural Municipality of Westin Paul request the municipal service officer to attend a future meeting of council to review and provide guidance on, to the Rural Municipality of Westin Paul regarding the municipality's council member code of conduct by law. Can I have a mover for the, for this?
I'll move it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Councilor Pacquiao moves. Can I have a second or?
Second.
Councilor Kleiber seconds it. Comments, discussions? Councilor Beshetti?
I'm just wondering, through the mayor.
Yep.
Why we're asking a municipal relations officer to come in for this? We have our M L O who's trained in all this. We've done course, the courses. We have the outline from the province. I'm just wondering why, like, there's an outline of how this works. We have, this has been going on for years, but we have to, why are we getting municipal relations, I guess, is what I'm trying to say coming in? Like, we're not seeing a problem, but.
Well, I guess I just wanna make sure that we're going down the right, that this is being done correctly and that it's being done properly. There was a, some, I guess, comments or questions on the last one that we had, so I thought that it probably best to get third input. They're the ones that, were the ones that drafted and they could probably give us a better understanding of what is, what's expected from this.
But if I, if.
By all.
Just, if we haven't finished going through it like we were going through it last meeting.
Yes.
And to discuss the what final verdict, I guess, we would discuss it to be, if we're bringing in someone like this to, we might all of a sudden come to a, you know, working out back and forth to a little bit of everything to try and get it to, you know, what we all feel comfortable prior to having somebody come in from municipal relations.
Okay.
Just my comments.
And just Councilor Campbell?
I, I agree with Councilor Beshetti's comments and then, so my question is, and maybe, I'm not sure if you know or not, so the lady, or the person from municipal relations, is that the person that has drawn up the code of conduct for the province?
Well, they didn't do it for the province, they work for municipal relations, so they're the ones that were part of.
The one that we all get, did they, did they, was she a part of drawing that one up?
Um, yes.
She's actually works with the person that actually drafted the entire legislation.
Yeah. So that, you know, that's, I, you know, I don't know if everybody's done it or not, so like I said, as we had our previous discussion, it's, you know, I, so since our last meeting, Mr. Mayor, I've reached out to some mayors of other regions and, well, done my own research as you had. And, you know, I know our, our code of conduct is very close to the city of Brandon, so I guess, you know, the city of Brandon would be, you know, not, not doing it correctly if we're saying that ours is not correctly. And I talked to quite a few different R M's and they all include the staff as well. So like I said, I know, you know, certain opinions are a lot to have the staff in, but I'd be curious to know how many R M's don't have the staff. Even, I know even reference East St. Paul, where they actually do have their staff covered in the code of conduct with them as well.
I guess you're gonna have to show me that then.
Sure, yeah, I can, I can pull it up right this minute.
No, okay. By all means, Councilor Kleiber.
The person that we're asking to come in is an expert on code of conduct, deals with the entire province, deals with all of the councils in the entire province. I would like to get her take on the, what is the code of conduct supposed to do for us? What is the direction that we should be going with it? What is it to accomplish? Because in the past, the code of conduct's been used as a weapon against certain people on council. And so I would like to hear what she has to say about what is the nature of this? What are we trying to accomplish with this? And where should we be going with this? And address any issues with staff and what other variations there may be in the problems of people in code of conduct. I know that there is in the municipal act, a requirement of code of conduct for staff members and we don't have one. So I'd like to get her take on that as well. Is, is a harassment document, is, is that sufficient enough to be a code of conduct for staff? So we, we, on the one way, we have, the code of conduct, in my opinion, here is one-sided because staff can put complaints against us. And, and let me take it to a natural conclusion. If the C E O was to put a complaint in against one of the council members, he is the, he is the, or she, he or she is the neutral party in the code of conduct. If they are now part of the complaint, they are the one that is supposed to send it off to the intake report. They are the ones that are supposed to vet it when it comes back. They are one that is supposed to facilitate the choosing of mediation and mediate, mediating services if they don't agree. This is the person that is supposed to choose the investigator if two parties don't agree. And then this is the person that in the end is supposed to facilitate an in-camera meeting with this complaint. Can you see the difficulty that we could have with that? So I would say that, I would like some input from municipal relations on how to deal with that. Because the way that the bylaw stands right now, it doesn't address that at all.
Okay, and Mr. C E O?
And we can see it as a conflict of interest as well.
Yeah. I would just say if, if the, Councilor Kleiber has a problem with the C E O, in accordance with respectful conduct by council, that, that duty that the C E O picked the investigator or whatever the C E O is involved with, with the code of conduct, that the C E O has a complaint, that's, it can simply be delegated to the M L O or the civic lawyer. So I want to just eliminate the right for the C E O or a staff member to ask for respect, mutual respect. It goes two ways. It's simply a matter of then someone else can do all that delegation. So that, those two don't come in hand in hand for me, that you have to eliminate all rights for respect to an administrative member because they may be selecting an investigator if, if, if it can't be agreed upon.
Okay.
Okay, well, let me respond to that.
Councilor Beshetti?
If I, oh, I said, okay, if I can, just gonna bring it back to the question that's on the table.
Yeah, by all means.
Bringing in the, the municipal relations person. We're a new council, you know, bringing up old council. Right now, we're talk, we started off last meeting going through it, discussing our concerns both ways on it. I'd like to finish going over that to see what we can, to come to some kind of a mutual understanding on both sides of the way everyone's looking at it before we bring in a, a municipal relations person who should be our last resort of, we can't get this done, you gotta tell us how we gotta go through this.
Okay.
Like, I think we've been doing good as a new council to, to discuss things and literally going over it and, and talking it out.
Councilor Kleiber?
Oh, was I on the list?
Oh, you were, sorry. Council, go ahead, go ahead. No, no.
You have a list there.
No. Sorry. Councilor Pacquiao?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. There's a lot of good comments around the table, a lot of good thoughtful comments. You know, when I first read our existing code of conduct, my thoughts were it's, it's pretty good. But, Mr. Mayor, I know you brought an amendment, proposed amendment to, to the council here for consideration. And we're currently looking at that, we're currently evaluating it. We've received some comments from public and from delegations during question period as well. And now you wanna put, you wanna, you wanna put, you're looking to invite municipal services officer. On the face of it, I don't have a problem with that. I think that, that this person will provide additional resource. We can also ask him some questions regarding other codes of conduct across the province of Manitoba or other municipalities. So I think they could certainly shed some light on that. So at the end of the day, my thoughts are on this motion that we have before us, that it's a good motion and it's gonna provide additional resource. We can ask questions in terms of process, in terms of, you know, if we wanna ask feedback from the public, how do we do that? How do we accomplish it? It'll also give our staff an opportunity to ask questions, you know, if they have any. I'm sure they do all during this meeting. So thank you for bringing it forward.
Okay. Councilor Kleiber?
I just wanted to clear.
Your next, Councilor Campbell?
I, I think I was first.
No, yeah, you, you go now and then after you is Councilor Kleiber.
Yeah, I just raised my hand, just to let it away.
I just wanted to clear the air and just say I don't have a problem with the C E O. What I'm looking at is a conflict of interest in there. Because if a staff member, you need a neutral party there. If you have, if you, if a staff member has a complaint, it could be seen that a staff member sticks up for a staff member and a council member sticks up for a council member. So you have to have some kind of division of power there where there's some neutrality and so that it's fair for everybody. That's my only concern here.
Sure. Councilor Campbell?
Uh, just a couple, a couple of questions. The municipal relations officer, you know, is she, you know, what is her bio, right? Like, I'm curious how she is an expert. Is she a lawyer? You know, what's, and then my next thing is, you know, and I don't know, has she had any interaction with this R M in the past with any of the current counselors or staff? And how has her interactions been with the staff in the past?
All I know is that when we were at A M, at the A M, she was, I believe she was the one that was doing the code of conduct for the, the municipal, for the municipal relations. They had people in the staff and I believe that's who is, I asked to come. So I'm not too sure what her credentials are, but, you know, this is what she does, this is part of her job. I would think that she would know what it is.
Just one, one final question.
Okay, right.
So, yeah, you know, this is a, this is a lady that's been involved with writing the current code of conduct that we want to actually chop up greatly. So I'm, you know, and that's why I'm just, it just sort of curious to me is, you know, this is the lady that's been involved in writing the one that we've all taken and we want to cut it up. So that's, that's my last comment.
Okay, thank you. Mr. C E O, you had?
Yeah, I, I think I'll save my, if we're gonna have somebody come in, I'll save my comments for that. But I, it's, just to clarify, it's not a staff member sticking up for a staff member. it's, just to clarify, it's not a staff member sticking up for a staff member. If there is a code of conduct, the process, it goes to the, uh, intake coordinator. And the intake coordinator, uh, makes a decision whether to move forward. So I think rather than restrict the rights of, of someone to, to, uh, to make a, a code of conduct complaint, maybe the, the flip side of that is, maybe a staff member shouldn't be involved in the process of selecting investigators, uh, uh, dealing with council or dealing with staff on it. Because I agree with Councilor Clyburn, when, uh, when the CEO has to deal with, with councilor members that are going through this process, it's, it's, it's not a, a good feeling mutual with the, the counselor or the mayor and the CEO when they have to deal, uh, m- most of the, uh, uh, investigations or submissions are, are amongst the council, not, not the staff. So that's, that's not a, a, a great thing for myself, the CEO. So I pref, I would prefer if someone arms-length, uh, if there was a complaint and, and, uh, there shouldn't be a lot of them, that that arms-length person came in and facilitated, uh, the, uh, when it goes to council, and after it goes to council, it goes to an intake, uh, person, so, uh, it's, it's, the CEO really not involved, or should they be involved?
Okay, thank you very much for your comments. So I'm just gonna now, uh, call for, um, gonna end the discussion, gonna call for a vote. All those in favor of the resolution?
Aye.
Aye.
All those in opposed? Carry it.
Did you vote for?
For.
Tiebreaker.
So the next one is, uh, ed- Okay, educational briefing. Uh, number fifteen five, be it resolved that the council of rural municipality hold an educational briefing to discuss co- council priorities and, uh, the twenty twenty-three budget. I guess I'm looking for a date, this is where we do our-
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to propose that we meet on, on Monday, January the ninth.
January ninth?
At, uh, six P.M.
Okay, is everyone all right with?
I'm not, but, um, is it? Would it be amenable to council if we met, um, after the Cal meeting on the following day? Cause we need to be there anyways.
Uh, my only reservation about that is that, uh, we don't know how long the meeting's gonna be, and we wouldn't need it, you know, and it's gonna be, it's getting late here. The last, uh, for me, the whole meeting, we got out of here probably at eight, and we'll need at least a couple hours, so.
Yeah.
And it, for me, this is a fairly important, uh, discussion. It's, it's a fairly important discussion, I think we'll need at least ninety solid minutes.
I guess, can we?
I will have to cancel what I had to do in order to attend, so I'll make my arrangements if I can.
Okay, anyone else that got any questions, Councilor?
Good.
Councilor Campbell, I think?
Nope, I'm good with that, January.
Okay, so then, January ninth?
Yep.
January ninth at six P.M.
I'll move that, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, can I have a second or?
I'll second.
Second it, Councilor Bresetti, seconds, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
I am opposed because I can't make it, I'll try.
One opposed, carried. So next, we're gonna go to, um, in camera.
Question period?
Oh, question period. Oh, yeah, question period, fifty, hey, sorry.
Go ahead.
I would just like to, uh, make sure that the question period is actually, it's not just.
Sure, okay, thank you very much, okay?
It's what, sorry? It's actual questions.
Oh, so pertaining to the agenda?
Pertaining to the agenda, yes.
Does it say that it has to pertaining to the agenda?
I don't, uh, wonder if I could have some guidance from our MLO on it.
And we ask questions.
That's correct, it's questions relating to the agenda.
Agenda, just this agenda? Okay, so questions relating to this agenda.
There we go.
See, come out here.
Good evening.
Good evening, you are?
I do have a question.
Okay, have your name first?
It's, uh, regard, Norma Albert, three twelve, Everland.
Okay, thank you.
And I have a question from the, um, payment register. It's regarding check number four, four, five, five, eight to Olympic Building Center for, uh, supply and installation of park shelter, one hundred and two thousand nine hundred and ten dollars and one cent. I went back to the, um, twenty twenty-two capital budget and I was able to find, identified five, six items on the capital budget that were related in any way to, uh, various parks around the, uh, RM. And they identified, um, uh, capital, uh, items such as shelters, tables, benches, uh, play structures, and one was just, uh, upgrades, wasn't term used. There were then two tenders that went out this year regarding the parks, and that was tender twenty twenty-two oh eight, which was specifically for park shelters in Lister Rapids and Legends. And twenty twenty-two ten, which was for playground equipment for Legends and River's Edge. Uh, neither of those have come back to council in admin reports following the closing of the tenders. So, um, I had assumed that that was for items under, uh, one hundred thousand dollars as is stated in the, uh, in the tendering and procurement policy. But when I matched up the items, in fact, this park shelters would be twenty twenty-two oh eight, uh, but it only, um, overlapped with putting a park shelter in Lister Rapids as identified in the budget. And that, uh, was, uh, identifying twenty thousand dollars. So this is five times that, at a hundred and three thousand dollars. And, um, in fact, for shelters, there were two parks that were identified for the shelters, McNaughton and Rivercrest, but those didn't receive them in the tender. The tender was for Lister Rapids and Legends. So if we follow that through, the amount is five times for just covering what was authorized in the capital budget as Lister Rapids. Coming in five times greater at a hundred and three thousand, which would put all of our park things as they were identified in the capital budget. If you multiply it by five, this one hundred and thirty-one thousand five hundred identified in the budget could conceivably come in at six hundred and fifty thousand dollars rather than a hundred and thirty thousand. So I'm just wondering how that gets reconciled.
Okay, so your payment register number was four, four, five, five, eight, that's the?
Four, four, five, five, eight, that's right.
That's the one in question?
Yes.
So you just wanna know what was all involved with this hundred thousand dollar payment?
Yes, and then how it gets reconciled with the authorization that would be given in the capital budget.
Okay, I've made note of it, and then we'll be in.
Okay.
We, we can get back after, okay?
Right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any more questions?
I have a question, but I don't know if I could question, I didn't know I asked a question.
You wanna just come forward, please, state your name.
Jerry Belinky, three, five, four, garbage guy.
Okay.
Uh, I understand you, the council only wants to hear questions about the agenda.
Yes.
So when is the resident supposed to be able to ask a question? I mean, if it, if council isn't aware of what's happening in a situation for a resident, when will the resident ask the question? Is it on a hope that is brought up on the agenda? And so what is, what would be the process? If it's not a request for service, where would we ask the question? In, in years past, we were allowed to ask questions, and I think this would inform the whole council because everybody doesn't know what's going on in, in somebody else's ward. So when a question is proposed or asked, it would, uh, bring, uh, to every member of the council. So where is the, you know, the transparency for the residents? Where can we ask the question?
Okay, I, I made note of it, and I'll, I'll get back to you on it. I've, I've heard something else before, and I know that you've asked that once before, so I guess I will get back.
And can I make a comment question?
Okay.
Okay, in, in the debate that was going on about bringing this, that woman down, whoever she is, uh, three, three were members that have been on council before. And they have a history of what is going on, but there are new members. So they don't know exactly what the correct way of things to be done. So I think it would be good to have this person to come in, so it would be the, sort of the official, uh, guide, not what people hear say and repeat and change, cause every time it's, it's repeated, it's changed. So I think it would be an excellent idea for the new members to hear, but it has to go on.
It really, it really wasn't a question, it was more or less of a comment.
Well, sort of a statement, I could ask the question if it could ask me a statement, yes.
So I don't know, I thought, Councilor Bresetti, you wanted to reply?
Yeah, just a comment, but, uh, we have staff that's trained for this. That's what their, the MLO is trained for, is all the municipal legislation and all that stuff, and that's where we take guidance. That's who we ask.
Could I reply?
I, I think that's it, we already asked one question, so.
Well, it's just an answer.
Pardon?
It's just an answer to him.
It's a question here.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so next we are going to, oh, sorry, Councilor Bresetti, that's-
Just ask for, just a point of order here on this one, before we go in camera. I'm just wondering why the, I'm just, I'm just, sorry, I'm moving the screen down.
Sure.
The zoning bylaw amendment is going in camera. We discussed last meeting and open to the public and, uh, the last bylaw that we're discussing. So I'm just wondering why we need to go in camera on a zoning bylaw, which i- is pretty, i- it's gonna be open, there's nothing legal in there, there's nothing regarding staff legal, anything that we need lawyers and therefore.
Yeah, actually, there is. It's in preliminary stages, it's in preliminary stages and therefore, under the in-camera, you can do anything in preliminary stages.
It, it, it will affect the municipality. And you'll see it when you, it'll be explained once it's in camera.
I, I don't feel we need to go in camera, cause the, the code of conduct one affected, affects the municipality and the working of the municipality. And we didn't go in camera with that one, we're, we're bringing in a, an expert on, or the municipal relations person, so, we should also then in camera have our lawyer sitting here at the same time then to go over the legal? Cause there's gonna be legal aspects of zoning bylaw amendments too then.
I guess, uh, what we have here is, is information that does change the zoning, uh, says changing the zoning bylaws. It's how it's gonna change the zoning bylaws that is, uh, needs to be explained into in camera. And it needs to be kept, uh, confidential because it's still in the preliminary stages. Once we have finalized it with, uh, council, then we can go to, um, take it to reading, go to public, uh, a public, uh, hearing, it, it won't go to the public hearing, it's not going to pass it. This is more or less just to get it so that the council understands what's being done, and if they have any questions on it, then we can move forward on it, that's the whole purpose of this.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, but, but we don't even have anything on it to understand what we're going in camera on.
You will see it when we go into camera.
Mr. Mayor, just, do, and maybe, uh, through the, through the mayor to the CEO or maybe, uh, MLO, what, uh, you know, what constitutes us being allowed to go in camera? I know previous councils have been scrutinized for going in camera, uh, before, that's, you know, and I've always thought it was something to do with, uh, you know, personnel or legal matters that were already going, ongoing and stuff like that. Do you, do you have a, you know, do you know what, what items are we allowed to legally go in camera for? Uh, you know, for forward items, or may, like I said, or through the chair, maybe the CEO knows, or maybe, uh?
Well, well, I don't know what we're going in camera for, I just know zoning bylaw, I have no idea what the, what we're discussing.
Sorry, through, through the, through the mayor, what, do you know, are you able to state or what, like, I know it's, when there's legal matters, when there's personnel matters, what other items are we allowed to? Cause I know there's only a list, it's not like we can frivolously go in, in camera.
Yeah, so can you bring up the, uh, from the act what it is?
Yes, I just said wrong.
So formally what it is?
Something wrong here.
Exactly, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, I'm really seeing something wrong here, and everybody watching is seeing something wrong.
Discuss legal matters and matters that are in preliminary stages, that's what's in your resolution. This matter is in a preliminary stage. And respecting which discussion public could predict prejudice of municipal's ability to carry out its activities or negotiation. Exactly what it is.
I'm sorry, I just need a moment to, uh?
If I may, well, if she's looking that up. I'm just bringing that up because we, we went quite openly with the last bylaw that we were doing last meeting with our code of conduct. And at least into the initial discussions.
Yes.
And to put it all in camera, unless we get to areas of the zoning that might to be, need to be in camera. I just, we were quite scrutinized in previous councils for going in camera. You know, the, the, this, saying the secret meetings, it, it's just, it was all over, and that's why I'm just kinda bringing it up that we spoke the last one quite openly.
Yeah.
And this one, even starting it out of camera, discussing stuff, and there might be stuff we need to go in camera to discuss.
Okay.
Yes, so, uh, council can close a meeting if, uh, the matter relates to an employee, including the employee's salary, duties and benefits, or any appraisal of the employee's performance. A matter that is in its preliminary stages and respecting which discussion and public could prejudice a municipality's ability to carry out its activities or negotiations. The conduct of an existing or anticipated legal proceeding. The conduct of an investigation under or enforcement of an act or bylaw. The security of documents or premises, or a report of the ombudsman received by the head of council under, uh, clause thirty-six one E of the Ombudsman Act.
Yes, so this follows, I mean, with the prejudice of the municipality preliminary hearing? And it gives specific information, it's not, um, it's not, uh, general information, it's specific information. Uh, when we were con, when we were doing a code of conduct, it was, it was general, it wasn't specific, there were no names mentioned. This is specific information that is, you know, this, this bylaw that we're, that's, that's being presented here. And really, it's not the whole bylaw, it is the way, uh, well, I, I guess I know how to.
It's a problem there.
It's such, and we just wanna make sure that council has, is aware of it, that they have any input onto it. Because there's gonna be, I'm, I'm gonna see some back and forth on this coming, but it is in the preliminary stage and it will jeopardize municipality. Yes, Councilor Pat, to that?
Yeah, uh, through, uh, Mr. Mayor, would it, is it possible then, just, cause it's the first time I'm hearing of it, about the zoning bylaw amendment?
Yeah.
Looking to go in camera?
Yeah.
Um, maybe is it possible that we'd be open to an educational briefing on the matter? Where we can have, uh, you know, some robust discussion, maybe some presentations by, you know, the folks in the river, the high district or, or whoever else can speak to this on, on this matter?
Uh, I guess, I have, I see an ethical briefing that's closed off to the public, right?
This is closed off to the public, is it?
Yeah, so, so, I mean.
Let's hear it.
Yes. We're, we're.
Well, it's, it just sounds like, it sounds like in cameras, it's open for personnel, uh, personnel matter or for union negotiations or matters that can't, where it's an educational briefing, I guess, more of a, more of a general discussion in terms of where you wanna go in terms of amendments. Just, there's many ways of approaching, so just providing a suggestion for your consideration.
Yes, Councilor Campbell?
Uh, just a question, it seems like Councilor- Just a question. It seems like Councilor Clyber is speaking about this matter. So is she privy to this as as well? This in camera matter?
Yes, she is.
So the rest of council is not privy to it, then?
Well, that's why I'm having this here, that it's.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just a little bit surprised.
Uh, that's why we're bringing it forward.
I'm doing a presentation.
Yes, she's doing the presentation. And when we, when we first brought this up, we we tabled it. So I mean, for further investigation and now it was.
It's very transparent.
Well, I I will say this, uh, Mayor Dujin, there, uh, on council, when I've been on the last forty years, there were one liners on the in camera, which said nothing. And when I asked what it was, I was never told. So, you know, we talked about transparency, but in the previous forty years, there was a lot of matters in in camera that were not transparent and I never knew what they were. So this is something that's in its preliminary stages. There is gonna be some brainstorming. Uh, but if council wants to have an educational briefing, we can do that. We're just going to brainstorm and ask for input. So if the council doesn't wanna give the input, that's fine. We can do it another time to give it.
Okay, Counsel Bichetti.
I think, also, um, I, you know, just, I I wasn't on previous council with you, so I, you know, I I know that gets referred to a lot, well, previous council, previous councils. I think us, us as a council, need to focus on what this council is doing and us moving forward instead of bringing up what, I, you know, I can't speak to what previous councils did.
Yeah.
And, you know, I I think that's one thing that we really have to work towards is just talk about what we're doing now and moving forward.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Bichetti.
I I'd just like to maybe have it clarified then the next, when we put stuff like that in camera, because really it, well, three of us don't know what what's coming up. That, and it's been brought up, I'm gonna use the line, in previous councils, we've had council members, residents and a few members of council saying, why is it gotta be a one liner? Maybe a little more explanation. If we're trying to resolve some of the issues that previous council had, I think this is how we do it, discussing it exactly the same way we're doing now, but maybe giving a little more input on that. On that one line of zoning, you know, is it even just going into preliminary stages of looking at the municipality? So anybody that's reading the agenda doesn't just go, oh, they're going in camera, you know, rezone the whole municipality.
Well.
Okay, wait. So I guess I'm just gonna call it, ask for some.
Oh, you need a mover? A second here.
Okay.
And then coffee.
Uh, for what?
To go in camera.
No, I understand that, but, uh, so there are, there's a couple things that we're going in camera for, correct? There's two things, so how do, how do we separate out the two?
You you go in camera and then we'll discuss in camera.
Okay. Okay, the other result, so I'm gonna call for the resolution.
You have to read the question? The resolution?
Yes, I'm gonna read the resolution, yes. Be it resolved that in accordance with subsection one fifty two of municipal act, council do now move in camera to discuss legal matters and matters that are in preliminary stages. Respect and respecting with discussions in public could prejudice, uh, municipality's ability to carry out its activities or negotiations. Be it further resolved that in accordance with subsection, with section eighty three, one dot two, uh, D of the municipal act, any issues that are discussed are kept confidential, are con, until discussed at the regular meeting of council. I call for a mover. All.
Move.
Counsel Clyber moves, call for a second or Counsel Bichetti seconds it. Uh, call for the vote?
Vote, discussion on.
Okay, discussion, yes.
So there are two items that are potentially, uh, going, that were potentially going in camera for.
Yes.
And you had asked, uh, the M L O regarding, um, perhaps splitting it out. Can we, can we not do that now, saying that we are only moving in camera for a particular item?
Yes, you can.
So is that, is that your will, Mr. Mayor, that you only wanna go in camera for one item?
I guess I wanna know what they wanna do. I mean, I think we should just go in camera and then discuss it there and then decide.
Okay, so then I'm, so then I'm gonna say that, uh, just picking up on what Counsel Bichetti was saying, because he made a really good point about, uh, the zoning bylaw amendment, uh, and just, or whatever, whatever matter we're going into. Can we, if we come out of camera, can we then talk conceptual so that we're transparent, somewhat transparent to the public in terms of why we went into camera for that particular item? And maybe talk conceptual, um, things that we, that were discussed in camera?
As long as you're, for your own sake, as long as it's not particular and it's just general.
Yeah, yeah, just like main headings.
Yes, yes, I got you.
Yeah, just a general, just because there can be legal issues with it.
I.
Counsel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, the feeling that, you know, I'm getting from the other councils is that they don't, I feel like they only wanna go into uh, camera for the one nineteen point one point two. That's, that's the feeling I'm getting from the rest of council. So I I would feel more comfortable breaking it out rather than just saying we're going in council with those two items still there. And that gives us, that's giving the ability to talk about those two items. So I know I would feel better if if we broke out the two items and didn't, you know, we were going in for nineteen point one point two myself.
Okay, Counsel Bichetti.
As Counsel Clyber, so there, during the rise in report, and Counsel Pactikin was saying, that's what we usually do coming out of camera is we do a rise in report, which is very vague on what we discussed. Is that not the way we usually do it? And after some of the comments that were, I guess, brought up here, I I'm ready to go into camera for both of them, because there were some, some comments said there that kinda per my, my ears here about presentations and other people privy to this, so I I'm good with that.
Yeah, Counsel, thank you.
Yeah, just on on that comment, like I did, at the end of the day, there's many ways that council can accomplish its business. And so the fact that we're here now, we have the zoning bylaw amendment, this is an option that you have uh, for this council to to deal with the matter. So yeah, I I I I'm okay to deal with it. And if we can rise in report and talk about some of the high level concepts that we talked about, I'm okay with it. I'm also okay with going into an educational briefing, but that's at some point unknown in the future. Uh, but now that we're here now, I mean, that's fine. I'm okay with with dealing with.
We're not, we're not even.
Okay, just wait.
But I'm just saying, I'm just saying that I'm okay with with dealing with this to hear preliminary information.
Counsel, sorry, Mr. C A O.
Yeah, I I guess, uh, my advice to councils, we just have to be careful. If we're going in camera to discuss concepts, that might not be a reason to go in camera.
Okay.
If you're going in to discuss a preliminary matter, uh, that may be negotiated at a further point, uh, that's a reason to go in camera. But if you're just going into camera to discuss concepts, uh, that may not qualify to go in camera. Council will have to figure that out.
Yeah, okay. Okay, and that's it. So then I call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, we're going in camera. Okay, yeah, so for the rise and, uh, the rise in report, we we reviewed the current zoning bylaws and ethical briefings for the River Planning District. And we also discussed, uh, future issues with the childcare center. Thank you. Uh, I now adjourn the meeting. Be it resolved that this meeting of council stand adjourned at eight, twelve P M. Uh, I, any comments on?
I'll move.
Can I have a mover? Counsel Clyber moves.
Second.
Counsel Campbell seconds it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Carry.